Made aware of, so they don't know that those type of activities are hap- happening. But we, many of us made a, a commitment of our time so that we could go there and improve on our understanding of ways to, to work for our city. So, wanted to share that with everybody and then congratulate Neptune Beach, uh, for their fabulous job in the way they recognized Buck Atlantic and Jack's Beach as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Sutton.
Yep, just, um, last week, uh, we participated in, uh, the recognition of the USS Stark. I think it was the thirty-eighth, uh, anniversary of the unfortunate, um, missile attack on the Stark nineteen eighty-seven, I believe it was. And, uh, thirty-seven sailors lost their lives that day. And, uh, those of us that were around certainly remember that and remember the memorial service, I believe, that was right here at Mayport with the president. And, um, was ve- very, uh, touching and very moving, uh, ceremony. And, uh, Rep. Michaels was able to make it, um, not only to the, um, uh, Northeast Florida League of Cities meeting on Thursday evening, but she was there for the, um, Stark Memorial as well, which was really nice of her to, uh, play hooky for a day and come over for a couple of important items. So, uh, all the beaches were represented, uh, as well as, uh, the city with Mayor Deegan there.
I'm sure she was not sad about the excuse to get out of Tallahassee for a couple of days. Mr. Horn?
Just briefly, I want to say thank you to Mayor Hoffman, thank you to Mayor Byland of Neptune Beach, and thank you to Mayor Curtis Ford of Atlantic Beach for their recent letter that was sent off to the, uh, Ford Department of Environmental Protection opposing this, uh, horrific request for a land swap in Guana State Reserve. Horrific is my term and my feelings, not representative of those on the council. But anybody who sees, um, a need for a development down there in what is a huge state nature preserve, um, I am glad to see, uh, the continued support in the community for opposing that. And I hope that everybody, if you get a chance to write anybody, if any poll in the Department of Environmental Protection, a, um, lawmaker at the local, state level, a national level, please do so because I do not want to see that area disappear. And all of the attached wildlife and memories. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Anybody else? Okay, I have kind of a random assortment. Um, busy week last week. I was, um, delighted and honored to be able to speak at the Fletcher Middle School National Junior Honor Society induction. Um, a lot of bright young minds joining that organization. Uh, it was a, a real challenge to come up with three minutes of entertaining, rising eighth graders. I think I did it, hopefully, we'll see. Um, and then we had two businesses open this week. We had Sizmore's, which is a new seafood restaurant right on the boardwalk. Uh, had their soft opening, Family and Friends opening. I think they're officially open on Wednesday for business. And a little further south, we had TJ Maxx open, and that is in the location of the old, um, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. They were looking to beat the single store grand opening weekend total. And judging by the line wrapped around the store for the many registers that were open, I think they probably did it. Um, coming up also along, uh, the note of Fletcher, their, uh, Fletcher High School is graduating on Friday. So congratulations in advance to all of those fresh new graduates entering the world. And, uh, let's see, let's see, tomorrow, we have the nonprofit center and the Beaches Action Collaborative. We'll be, uh, presenting the Community Indicators Report right here in council chambers at lunchtime. If you haven't already RSVP'd, it's definitely gonna be standing room only, but let me know if you'd like to attend. Um, two more events, the Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association is hosting their annual garage sale on May thirty-first. It is gonna be at the police station. This is how they raise money for all of the events that they put on through the year. So they have a Santa event, they do a big Halloween event, they do things to support our police officers and citizens on patrol, uh, throughout the year. So that is a worthwhile cause if you are so inclined to garage sale. And then the next big event that the city has coming up is Country Fest, which is gonna be on June nineteenth. But most importantly, this is National Public Works Week. It is a tongue twister if you try to say it, but congratulations to our, uh, Public Works Director Dennis Barron, who's here today, um, and to all of our Public Works, um, employees and staff. Their theme this year is people, purpose, presence. And Public Works is definitely one of those, uh, parts of our city that is ever-present, working in the background. Uh, but they're always working to advance our quality of life, even if you may not see them. But when you're not there, you definitely notice. And this is the second year where there's been a very apropos agenda item. So today we will be discussing sludge. It's one of those items that I think Mr. Barron does on purpose to really remind us of the importance of Public Works. Um, and I signed the other, there's two proclamations, we're gonna spare you, uh, the reading, or spare me maybe, the reading and the presentation of them. The other one was for Water Reuse Week, is that it? So it's also water reuse. So celebrate however you so choose, but definitely worth, we're celebrating. We're gonna celebrate by considering our sludge hauling issue today. So please pass on our appreciation, Mr. Barron, to your staff and team, uh, for the great work that they do. Not just National Public Works Week, but every week of the year. Anybody else? Okay, uh, moving on to courtesy of the floor, we will, uh, we've got a couple speaker cards that are not attached to agenda items. Uh, when I call your name, coming up to the podium, the light is green. You do not need to press anything, but give us your name, address, and you will have three minutes to address the council. Uh, Michelle Ma- Mattisil.
Good evening, Council members. I'm here to speak on behalf of the entrance, uh, the beach access entrance to Thirty-seventh Avenue South. It is, um, something that's been, uh, really weighing on a lot of us that not only live there, but people who access the public, people walking across third and so on and so forth. It is, uh, really slippery. A lot of, we've seen people fall. And it's concerning, the safety issue. I almost slipped this morning, and it's been three times for me. I know four people who have fallen, and I think the city needs to be aware that something needs to be, uh, to address that issue. It's affecting us as, as beachgoers. And, uh, this is another side issue. I've asked, uh, three or four times if we could please have the wood covers for the, the trash cans on the beach aesthetically. They're on this, I see the wood covers on the street side before people access the beach, but the ones that are on the beach are now just the, the black tubs. So, you know, wind, you know, and just the aesthetics of it. I mean, our beach is beautiful, and I think that the covers actually are lovely. It just makes it that much nicer. So main thing, safety issue, those ramps, please get out and, and go observe those ramps. And one of my neighbors, uh, he'll be addressing you all soon. Uh, it's, it's difficult to navigate it, people, uh, pedestrians and bikes that try to navigate it together, it's narrow. So I really implore you all to check out the ramps. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Daryl Griswold.
Good evening, um, my name is Daryl Griswold, I live at one thirty-one Thirty-seventh Avenue in Jack's Beach. When I bought my home about twenty years ago, the primary reason that I bought there was for beach access. For, this is my son Christopher, by the way, in the wheelchair. And in the beginning, I'm telling you, it was so nice. It was, the ramp used to be straight through to the beach, and we could put him in his beach chair, we could stroll, roll him down right to the beach. He could put his wa- feet in the water, and it was great. Over the years, one of the storms took out the bottom portion of the ramp, and it was no longer, we could only go halfway up. And that was okay because he could still see the, the beach, he could still see his friends coming and going. And then when they moved the dunes up, um, he couldn't see anything. And I understand they had to move the dunes, but he couldn't see. He would sit on the ramp, he couldn't see over the dunes, so he couldn't see the beach, couldn't see anybody. We would sit there and still talk to our friends and neighbors as they came through. So, um, for years, I sent emails to various members of the council, and, um, and I have all those emails, by the way, asking if they could just replace that ramp that was there. Finally, after about five, six years, it got replaced. And I was so happy that it was replaced because, you know, it's what we've been asking for all these years. When it got replaced, um, we went down and, um, the, the, the way it's configured, the, the ramp is so steep going up, I can barely get his wheelchair up. And I won't even tell you, when he got to the top, I won't even try to go down because I did one time and his wheelchair started slipping and scared the hell out of me. So we had to back up. So we could still get to the top of the ramp, and he can still see, now he can see where he couldn't see before, but that's as far as he can go. And so, um, I was happy for that. And then after a while, when the, after the first rainstorm or the windstorm, we went down there and it was two foot of sand. We couldn't get up anymore. And I would try to get up, slide back down. I went over to Home Depot, I bought a snow shovel and a, and a broom. I would go up there almost every time he wanted to go, and I would sweep. And my neighbors would come out and they would help me sweep, and we'd shovel, shovel the stand over. The next day would just blow back on. So, you know, um, I understand too, that's not, as Michelle was saying, it's not safe, it's not safe for us. It's, it's not safe for beach buggies, or bicycles, or women, but strollers. Um, I've seen several people fall, slip, you know? Thank God it hasn't been serious. When, I'll, I'll just close with this, when I was talking to my, oh, actually Bill Horn has come out and swept the thing for me too. And I thank him for that, that, I can't believe that he did that, but he came out on his own, on a weekend and swept and cleared it off, and then knocked on my door and said, it's clear. I was talking to one of the former members, and I said to her, um, why won't you do this for what we're asking? And she said, well, because it's not an ADA accessibility and we don't have to do it, we're not required to do it. And I said, why don't you do it because it's the right thing to do? And that's all, you know, so I'm asking you guys, you know, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griswold. Roger Whiting?
Hello, Roger Whiting, eleven oh-three Second Avenue North, Jack's Beach. Um, I'm here to address about the new building that they're planning on sixth, that'll be coming here, I assume, pretty soon. I went to the meeting last Tuesday to hear the presentation from the applicant, so I could make a decision of whether to actually support it or not. Surprising enough, the presentation had been made a week prior at the committee briefing. Even though nothing was posted about any kind of a presentation or anything at a briefing meeting, I didn't even think that was allowed by rules. The whole presentation I was presented with was, well, we gave you our whole presentation a week ago. So if you don't have any, if you have any questions, we're here to answer. That was the entire presentation to the public. It's a little concerning. The other thing is, the building is proposed to be fifty-nine feet high. Second line item in your, on their agenda for what they're considering is thirty-five foot maximal heights. I'm gonna speak again, I will speak at their meeting next Tuesday to address my concerns with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whiting. Brian Green?
My name is Brian Green, I live at thirty-eight ten Tropical Terrace, Jacksonville Beach, Florida. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Brian Green, a licensed architect and licensed contractor in Florida. I'm here to share serious concerns about the dune walkover structures, particularly the one at Thirty-seventh Avenue South. That walkover was permitted, but has never received a final inspection or certificate of completion, which does not comply with the Florida Building Code. Despite this, the public has been allowed to use this non-conforming structure. This is not an isolated issue. Many dune walkovers built under the city's commission appear to be out of compliance, bypassing the required design, permitting inspections and certification processes. Section forty-six, four-six-eight, excuse me, point six oh-four of the Florida statutes requires the building official to review and certify all permitted structures before public use. In this case, and likely others, that has not occurred. Chief Building Official George Knight sent me a follow-up email on May fifth, twenty twenty-five, confirming the permit for Thirty-seventh Avenue South is inactive, and has never undergone a final inspection despite supposedly meeting Florida Building Code requirements to receive the permit. On May seventh, I reviewed the city commission permitted documents here, in this chamber. I was closely observed by officials making the experience feel more intimidating than transparent. Within minutes, I identified significant design inaccuracies. During that meeting, I asked Chief Building Official George Knight about the permit approvals and why it was allowed. His response was shocking. He said, and quote, "All I do is make sure the documents are signed and sealed by a professional," quote. When I reminded him that his duties per Florida statute extend beyond those first steps, he replied, quote, "Things will go easier for me if I don't make such a commotion and that I need to act more civil, a direct threat." This felt like an attempt to discourage a professional from raising valid safety concerns. This matter is about accountability, code compliance, and public safety. I have filed formal complaints with the Department of Business and Professional Regulation and the Department of Justice, as well as had multiple calls with the Department of Justice to confirm ramp requirements related to this matter. Despite multiple emails to the mayor, city council, and staff, I have yet to receive a substantial response. City Manager Mike Stephanopoulos is the most elusive. He does not provide a public email address and is nearly impossible to reach by phone. A concerning predicament for Jacksonville Beach taxpayers. This is not merely a procedural failure, it's gross negligence. The public, your sworn duties, and professional warnings have been overlooked amid inaction and red tape. Madam Mayor, when I addressed this with you directly, your response was, get it in black and white, because that's all that matters. Then you declared, this meeting is over, petulantly turned and left without further engagement. How will you respond now that the facts are out in the open? Let the record show, this council, this administration, and this building and zoning department know about these problems, and have yet to take appropriate action or fulfill their duties. The responsibility lies with all of you. Every decision, every permit, every missed step, and every person who is unaware of the risks that these structures pose. If you think your titles, silence, or bureaucracy will protect you, think again. So here's your notice, per your request, Mrs. Hoffman, in black and white, exactly what you asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Kathy Jackson?
Good evening, um, I'm Kathy Jackson, I live at one ninety-four Bermuda Place, Jack's Beach. Uh, first of all, thank you for permitting me to speak before this council, and thank you for your service. But I'm along with my, uh, neighbors here, um, on the beach access of Thirty-seventh Street. Uh, we're grateful that it finally did get, um, rebuilt. And it really is a beautiful structure, but there's two things that are really wrong with it. One of which is when you start to walk it. Um, and I walk tw- twice a day with all my neighbors, um, pass by many of them. And some of them are a little older, and all of us have had difficulties when we go to step on the ramp, particularly if there's dew on it, it gets very slippery. And then there's that, uh, thing of sand that the wind will blow up on it, and so it's almost like a slide. Um, so as you're going up, you really do have to hang on to the handles as you're walking your way up because you don't know exactly where you're gonna hit that point. And I have watched one of my neighbors down the street, uh, fall. And so I just think that, that, that's one thing. The other thing is the fact that it is so steep. I would never bring my husband down there who's in a wheelchair, um, because I could not actually get him up, you know, the ramp. But, you know, I think that those things do need to be corrected because I think the beaches should be enjoyed by all. Um, I love living here at the beach, I feel very fortunate to have been living here since nineteen eighty-six and watched the place change and grow, um, and actually become a community of, of neighbors and businesses. Um, but I really like, you know, things that are important, like beach access, be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. That is it for our speaker cards, so we will move on to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Sutton?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to, uh, remove item D, uh, from the consent agenda, and Mr. Stephanopoulos will cover it as item B under City Manager, new business.
Thank you, Mr. Janson.
Uh, in reference to item, did you say B?
D.
Removing item D, and he will cover it as item B.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda less item D. All in, or, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda less item D carries. Moving on to City Manager, new business, Mr. Barron. Let's talk sludge.
Uh, Mayor and Council, thank you. Uh, this evening you have in front of you a, a new contract for hauling sludge, uh, from the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, most of you know, in the processing of wastewater, the one byproduct that we have to get rid of and haul off is sludge. It's what's left after all of, uh, the processings happened at the plant. Um, so we have a contract that does that. We got out of sludge hauling business several years ago, uh, long before I got here. Uh, safety concern of being able to travel our employees out to, uh, the landfill, which is out on three oh-one, which is a long way west of town. Lot of time driving on the road, doing nothing but moving. So we've gone to a new system where they bring us a truck, we fill up the truck, they come get the truck, haul it for us. Uh, they just always keep, uh, at least one, if not two trucks on site so that we can continue to, uh, run sludge, uh, pretty much every day or as, as needed. Uh, it takes several days to fill a truck, but then they can move it out. So this is for a new contract, uh, the recommendation here is for the, the three-year contract with a single two-year extension. And then CPI is built into the, um, to the, to the rates for adjustment. So there's not any need for much further negotiation. As long as both parties agree to, uh, the extension, it would pretty much just be bringing it, um, as a informality. If it, if it doesn't pass, to be able to bring it to the City Manager and Mayor for approval. If I have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Can we have a motion on section one?
I move we award bid number twenty-four twenty-five dash zero five to Revenue Incorporated for sludge hauling.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion or questions from council? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Janson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Section two?
I authorize the mayor and city manager to negotiate and execute any contract as a result of this bid award.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion or questions from council? Sign on, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Janson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Section three?
I move we delegate the authority to the City Manager to approve and execute all subsequent contract manuals through the maximum contract term.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion, Mr. Wagner?
Just to clarify, the, any additional co- contract term is just that one, two-year approval?
Correct.
Any other questions? Mr. Stephanopoulos?
Did you reference earlier that it's tied to CPI?
Uh, I did, just to make sure.
Any other questions, comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Janson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
No.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
No.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
No.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Barron. Uh, moving back to the item that was removed from the consent agenda, um, Ms. Nelson, are you presenting this one? Or Mr. Stephanopoulos?
Good evening, Karen Nelson, Deputy City Manager. Um, you have in front of you, uh, an item to appoint or to approve the City Manager's appointment of Molly Alager as the City Clerk. Um, you have a memo that defines our, the process that we used to select the City Clerk, but I'll go ahead and just summarize that for you all. Sherry, our, uh, Sherry Goslin, our City Clerk, is gonna be retiring at the end of the month. So with that in mind, we posted the City Clerk position and, at the end of February. And we left it open from February twenty-seventh through, uh, March thirty-first. So for a full month, um, we posted it nationwide. We received a total of a hundred and nine applicants. Of those applicants, only twelve candidates met the minimum qualifications. And of those twelve, eight had experience in a clerk's office. Um, so of the twelve candidates, ten were external candidates and two were internal candidates. So we put together a, a panel to screen and, um, select candidates, external candidates for a telephone interview as a first step. We selected four external candidates. One of those candidates withdrew before we had a chance to do the, um, telephone interviews. And so with three external candidates, the City Manager, the Deputy City Manager, and the HR Director conducted those telephone interviews. We selected from the external candidates, one candidate to move forward to the next step, along with the two internal candidates. And then a panel consisting of the City Manager, Deputy City Manager, City Attorney, CFO, CIO, and the legal assistant, interviewed the three remaining candidates, um, for the position. The panel agreed initially to extend an offer to the external candidate, who was very well-qualified with, uh, twenty-plus years of experience as a village clerk in South Florida. Uh, that candidate was, we extended an offer to that candidate, and she declined deciding that it wasn't the right time to relocate the family. And so we reconvened the panel, and as a, as a group, the six of us decided to extend an offer to Molly, one of the two remaining, uh, candidates, both internal candidates. Um, you have with your packet a copy of Molly's, um, letter and her resume, which details her qualifications. Um, and I, I am here to answer any questions you might have. Molly is also with us tonight, so we can answer any, any questions that you have. I just want to say that, um, I know, I, I think I can speak for myself and the City Manager that we have complete confidence in Molly's abilities. We've worked with her since twenty twenty-one, uh, twenty-three, in, twenty-two, yeah, she came up to the City Manager's office. And since then, she has just been, um, and, yeah, in, in invaluable support to all of us in the City Manager's office, all of you on the City Council, to employees across all city departments, and to the community in general.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson, and a motion?
I move we approve the City Manager's appointment of Molly Alager to the City Clerk position, effective May twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Sutton?
Uh, just a couple of questions, either Karen for you or, or Mike, either one. And congratulations, Sherry, um, you'll be missed. I, I think I've been around you for, uh, twenty years, or a little more than twenty years, um, back all the way to when we used to have the Code Enforcement Board. So, um, you'll, you'll be missed and appreciate your, uh, service. So question for you two, was there ever any, um, thought as to involving Ms. Goslin in the interview process? Since that's probably the individual who has the most experience and would, uh, probably provide some in-depth input?
We, uh, consulted with Ms. Goslin before we started the interview process, just to get her takes on the position. However, she was out of country for, how long was that cruise? A month?
Pre-retirement.
Month plus, if I recall correctly. Uh, she was out of country for a long period of time getting ready for her, uh, retirement. So she did not sit on the interview panels, unfortunately.
Yep, I do think that's unfortunate, I think that's a missed opportunity there. Um, so just very briefly, um, with two really good internal candidates, uh, Ms. Byrd sitting there with three and a half years as the, um, Deputy City Clerk, and a number of years before that in the department down there. What set, if you could summarize, what set Ms. Alager apart from Ms. Byrd? Just in summary?
Sure, the, um, the one thing that I think we've come to appreciate from Ms. Alager is, uh, her managerial and her leadership skillset that she brings to the table. Uh, the interview questions that we put together actually throw, uh, covered multiple, uh, elements of what this job covers. Uh, but one of the big things that we look for, uh, especially in leadership-grade positions, is, uh, proven track record of leadership. And Molly, working as the assistant to the City Manager, has had to work with the constituency of this community, both the residents and the businesses. She's had to work with elected officials, not just you, but also elected officials from other, uh, agencies and communities, outside agencies as well, um, and also every department, both the directors and the senior management within our organization. And she has been highly effective in doing all of that, as well as being an exemplary role model, model of our mission, vision, and values for the organization. Those are the things that set her apart and make her, um, a prime candidate to put at the executive leadership team table for the organization.
Thank you, and those were, um, either advertised or discussed as important to, to the job going in?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Jansen?
Yes, I just want to say a couple of things. Number one, Sherry, thanks for your time and effort and energy in the city clerk's office. You've always been highly responsive. Whenever I call, need an answer or clarification, you, you're really quick on the spot, especially during the campaign season, which can get a little hairy at times. So, uh, thank you for the, the effort and the work that you put forward. And I hope you have Godspeed in your retirement, enjoy your retirement. Secondly, I want to congratulate Molly. Molly, I know that, um, managing, uh, seven council members, or six council members and the mayor can get quite tedious at times, and I will, I know that I've had to reach out to you during travel and, uh, rare occasions that are on the weekends or in after hours, and you're always quick to respond. I know that, that's not your normal work hours, but it just shows you're, uh, that you're tenacious and that you want to get the job done. And you, you've shown me a really good work product, so I think, uh, it's well deserved, at least from my seat. And I appreciate, um, the, all the work that you've done, and congratulations.
Mr. Horn?
I'll just wait to say one thing, as I told Mike, that it, I think you'll do, I think you'll do a great job. And I will say that it's difficult to put forward a very, if you have an employee working for you, and they're very effective at what they do, you're almost hamstringing yourself by letting them go and, and do another position. But at the same time, I think, you know, this will be a good opportunity for you, so. But now Mike has to find some big shoes to fill.
Yeah, I don't even want to talk right now. I texted Molly today. Um, I'm very happy for you. I'm happy for your career path. I'm very sad for myself and for my colleagues on this dais. Um, you have, and I was worried about you even moving over from Parks and Rec. But you did a spectacular job. You really built this role into, um, you, you really just did a great job kind of elevating it. And have been a great support to me. Um, I can see why you're so good at handling the seven of us, uh, with the two small children sitting next to you. So that's great, uh, on the job and, uh, transferable skills that you have there. I also really appreciate Mr. Stephanopoulos, as long as he's been here, has really looked, uh, to develop the talent within. And I think that that is, um, I, while also keeping an eye on the marketplace and making sure that we're, are, we're seeing who else is out there and who else can bring, um, bring their talents to our city and exemplify our values. So, um, so I'm, I'm interested, excited for you, interested to watch this transition. Um, if you guys don't know Molly's family, I just want to recognize dad Walter, husband Rich, little Maya there, and Ezra, who have come along. Hi, Ezra. Mr. Hundred Miler, right? Did I hear you ran a hundred miles this year? Oh, he's back to his phone. Good, a hundred and thirty? One hundred and thirty miles with those little legs. Good job, Ezra, Ezra, congratulations. Um, and Sherry, I also, I, yeah, I just don't want to talk anymore because this is a sad and happy day. Mr. Wagner, go ahead, take it away. I'll turn my microphone off.
I won't take up too much time, but, you know, I do want to echo the sentiment. Sherry, just thank you for everything you've done, and we really do appreciate everything. And, um, Molly, congratulations and thanks for everything you've done for us and everything you will do for us. I, I do hope everybody appreciates the fact that a level of transparency is important and, and I think appreciated by those on the dais to allow us to understand the process. Uh, and so I, I do appreciate, uh, uh, Councilor Sutton bringing this up so that we could understand it to kind of a greater level of detail and greater level of transparency. So, no, it's not always the easiest, and it's not always the easiest on, on other sides. I do, do appreciate, um, everybody's role in that. And then, congratulations to everybody.
Mr. Sutton?
And just one more comment. Um, based on that, Mr. Wagner, I would ask Mr. Stephanopoulos and Ms. Nelson, um, in the future to not have items like this on the consent agenda. I think it's important enough that, um, we, we've had a nice discussion here, and I would expect them to not be on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Any other comments or questions?
I do also want to add the professionalism of the clerk's office. I think you're my third or fourth clerk. And it's just, it's really nice day from when I started, um, and especially the management of the elections, which is when we have the most, um, consistent interaction with you has been, um, it's just been a really impressive change. So thank you for your leadership on that front. Mr. Wouters?
Yeah, Ms. Goslin, thank you so much for everything you did for me. You were always very kind to me and very helpful, and I'll never forget it. And I did want to say I appreciate the comments of Councilman Sutton. Um, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations to our new city clerk. And, yeah, we'll do a photo after the meeting, asking for a friend, when is Molly's position gonna be posted? Let's, uh,
Tomorrow.
Share that, that job posting. We've got, uh, a, a real set of shoes, big shoes to fill and a real high bar to, to reach with this position. Uh, so no further business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Ms.